3:00 PM school board workshop. In a moment, we're going to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. But I just ask that all of us, just if we can, take a moment for all the lives lost and the damage that has been caused by the hurricane through the state of Florida and our neighboring states, just to keep them in their thoughts and prayers. So please join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance of the National Land. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flagline of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? One so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming. Whose bright stars and bright stars through the perilous night? For though man-arts be watched, were so gallants be streaming. And the rockets red glare at the sea's edge. The pride that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and... And the home of the brave.
Please be seated. Okay, roll call.
Sharon Masaro here. Colin Conklin present.
Kristy Chong.
Will Ferry present.
LaShawka Moore.
Okay, so do we have any additions or changes to the agenda today?
We do not.
Okay. So then I'd like a motion to please adopt the agenda.
A little approval?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Masaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, hearing none. We move forward with this agenda. We now move forward to public comment. Is there anybody signed up for public comment? Okay, so we will close public comment and move on to seven, finance consent.
Good afternoon Chairman Ferry, Board members and Superintendent Moore.
Good afternoon.
Any questions you have on finance consent, 7.01 through 7.07.
Okay, so we will start with first imagine charter school financials. Is there any questions in regards to the financials? Okay. We have, we'll move on to 7.02 then. Approval of purchases, purchase orders over $10,000.
Yeah, I was curious about the 14,000 we're spending for resurfaced pickleball courts at ITMS.
So I'll have...
I know, that's my favorite.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
That is at Indian Trails for the students, the kids that were creating a pickleball court. The school is going to purchase nets and stuff, the portable nets for them to be able to use that during the school time. That is behind the fence, so it's in a secured area. We originally were looking at the tennis courts, but we just resurfaced the tennis courts and they're using those. And there was another area that we were able to utilize, the pickleball courts.
So it's all new, it's a newer area?
No, it, we're fixing, there was a concrete slab that was there, so we're fixing that and then painting, putting lines on there so they can utilize it during the school day.
Does the general public have any access to that through the Indian Trails Park sports complex?
During school hours, no, but if they wanted it, it would go through our use of facilities agreement or through use of facilities like any other thing would.
Okay, okay, that's part of what I was interested in seeing. Okay, that's good, that's on you.
That's it?
That's it.
Any other questions for, I have, I have a question and I think you're the one that might answer it. For the annual service of the intercom system district wide.
Yes, that was an agreement that we haven't had in the past and that, that includes service and parts for our intercom system. So we haven't been doing a really good job on doing preventive maintenance with our intercom systems, especially leading into school and that. So this provides, they come in during the summer, they go through our systems. There's been a lot of software updates and firmware updates that have been behind and this also includes that. And this is district wide for all of our facilities and it includes parts throughout that entire year as well.
I see, so basically this is an annual event where they come in, assess the, the condition of our, of our intercom systems and then do whatever necessary repairs under contract. So, and parts?
Yes, and throughout the year. So if there is a intercom problem or issue throughout the year, we would call them basically a service call that covers that as well as part of this agreement.
And is that, is that from the manufacturer of this system or is it just a service that offers this for any type of intercom?
This is through Jacksonville Sound. That's typically, that's who we've used in the vast company that whenever we've had intercom calls or service calls, that's who we would call to come in and service. And they've done a lot of our installs, our intercom installs and upgrades.
Okay, so this was to sort of outsource this from, we were doing it in-house before and now we've outsourced it?
No, I mean, we, we go in to look at what it is when it gets into the software and the firmware and the cards, when the, we have issues with the intercom cards, we would still be calling Jacksonville Sound. Then we, you get the trip charge, then there's a lot of fees for them to come down where this also allows, I want to say it's either 24 or 48 hours also for a response time where the other way, without a contract, it's, we need, we've got a problem, when can you get here? You know, when we have an intercom, it's way more important for us depending on what, how busy they are. So this allows us to have a little, be quicker of response for them as well.
I just, the reason why I was asking is you started off by saying we weren't doing a very good job of keeping them up and so that's why I referenced that, did we outsource it for that reason, we not have the manpower, was it a skill level, what was the reason for that?
We do not have intercom, I mean, we have someone that looks at it, but to go into the depth of the firmware, what I'm talking about, that we weren't doing a good job is going in there and what firmware number were we at? What is the newest update and doing that regularly to make sure that we had the most current to make sure that it's working as efficiently as it can. So this allows that to happen every year instead of when we start having intercom problems realizing, oh, well, we're two or three back and we need to do that now. So it just helps us maintain...
So it's a more proactive solution than a reactive?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, very good.
Year-round service versus it's broadcast, we have an issue, it needs fixing.
Correct, yes.
Okay, I mean, communication's important, especially that.
Especially.
So, okay, very good. Let's see here, I had some other questions.
While you do that, maybe it can help me with this one. Yeah, the white fleet, we're spending a lot of money, I don't know who's in charge, I guess you need...
That was where I was going.
He's coming right now.
Yeah, the, we're spending a lot of money and buying a whole lot more vehicles and we have a lot of vehicles. Do we have an inventory on those vehicles?
Of what?
The white fleet.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Because we never...
And aging miles?
Yeah, I know we're aging them out, is that what most of this is?
Yeah, yes ma'am, it is. Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
That is, that is correct and I have, I can talk to each one of these if you'd like.
Not necessarily, just as a group. So I think general public will see, we have a large white fleet, we do. And now we're getting more, so if you just kind of explain what we're doing.
Well, these are replacement, mainly these are replacement vehicles and, you know, you saw on one of them that we're purchasing six Ford Explorers and those, the average miles of the ones that they're replacing is 132,000 miles is the average for the six vehicles that they're replacing. The maintenance cost overall is about 88,000 for all those vehicles. Those vehicles are from 2006 to 2008, so they're up there in age. So we're really replacing vehicles that are in the fleet. Now, there are ones and twos that we are, we might be adding one, but it's for a specific purpose. We are adding some more vans for the high schools for travel and that's to defray some of the costs that you have to pay for...
Which is good because the buses, the contracted buses are ridiculous.
Contracted buses and the drivers, we, we don't have enough drivers. Our first priority for the drivers is to the kids in school and to go on field trips, they leave a lot of times prior to the drivers getting back, so we're adding some vehicles for that, some vans for that, so.
Do you get a return on the older vehicles? What do they, what happens with the older vehicles?
The older vehicles, we end up usually taking...
Auction?
Auction.
Okay.
And we get a...
Something.
We get something back for them, but when a vehicle has 150,000 miles on it and it's a 2006...
You're not getting a lot.
You're not getting a lot. Right. And then, so are these all, these are all brand new 2025? They are. Models, okay. So we get, just like any other purchase, we get that factory warranty for a period of time also. What, what does that typically be, three, five years? It's, it's usually a four to five year depending upon the make and model. And we're able to, you know, take it in for either warranty upgrades or, like on our, our Ford Explorers, there was an upgrade that came out that was covered under warranty for rear air conditioning. So we had to schedule all our Explorers in to get that rear air conditioning module repaired and upgraded, so yes, they're all under warranty. Gotcha, so you said that the age of our current ones were from like 2006? 2006 to 2008. Okay, so yeah, they're quite old, so we definitely drive them to the wheels are about to fall off, not quite there. And, and just the maintenance cost, I mean, you, you do look at your, typically for, for a fleet, there's really no magic number for miles or for age. You do look at about 100,000 miles. After that, we need to be thinking about when we're going to replace it. And that could be four years, it could be five years, or it could be 10, 12 years. So... And we service all those vehicles in-house? We do. Okay. All right, yeah, that was my other question, so thanks for bringing that up.
So to just kind of be clear, especially for the public, is the white fleet, though we are adding a couple new, it is replacement and the additional that we are adding for the vans are specifically for our schools, going directly into our, our high schools. Because the vans, as you know, a few years ago, when we purchased vans for, even our vans that we purchased from the, for the elementary school, we've had to put those vans in use, be it through our transportation department or at our high schools for, for different sports and clubs. So just to be clear, what we're purchasing are replacements and the additions are specifically for our schools.
And the vans that we purchased for the elementary schools, we did analysis of that and they weren't being used as much as they could have, so that's when we pulled them back, we established a van pool and then this year we established four new van routes. So those are primarily for picking up and dropping off students, those vans, instead of sending the 77 passenger bus down to Hunter's Ridge, we're putting them on a van where we can in some ca, in some cases, so. And, and the fact that they're purchased or do ball forward, I see there's a contract in place that we've piggybacked off of for those? Okay, and is there, is there a reason, what would be the process, we wanted, I mean, I guess if the local Ford dealer, they would have had an opportunity to put bids out for that at some point or? We purchase off the state contract because it's already gone through that... All that's already been done? All, all of that bidding process has been done and there are only certain dealers that have that state contract. Okay, because probably the only certain ones can accommodate the amount of vehicles that need the demand, that type of thing, okay, got it.
Well, and if, if they wanted to, they probably could apply to the state list to see if they could...
Right, to be included in any, gotcha, okay. There's always trying to seek out to keep the dollars local whenever we can, so. All right, I have no further questions, anybody else on this?
Just one, the expansion of the FTC truck, the truck driving test bed, can you tell us a little bit about that? And maybe this is an unfair question for you guys, but was, was that in the capital five-year plan?
Yes.
And do, is the, I know the program's pretty successful, but is it growing? Where are they doing that testing now?
Some of it's being done on a US one, but it's a combination because we're going to be using that same for the bus transportation.
Oh, so it's got to have a dual purpose?
Yes, ma'am, and forgive me because I don't, there was something that was passed, some type of testing that changed, that it was required, it was going to be, need to be done in 2026, a new lines and all of that. Well, they upped it to where it had to be done and operational by December 1st of this year. So we talked about, you know, the buses were up at Indian Trails and there's some challenges with that and we've been using out at US one, the transportation or a bus driver or a truck driver. So we got with them and said, how about, can we use this as dual use? Because it is the exact same, this particular testing is the exact same for both programs. So that was where we like, okay, well, this is a, we felt win-win to do both things instead of having to do one at US one and then do another, at Indian Trails didn't make sense.
It doesn't say that in the agenda item, does it?
For...
No, but I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, like this is a perfect example, that is a win-win. So saying in the agenda item somewhere, you know, in the line item about the dual purpose, it just shows, I mean, really smart...
Under the PO description?
Yeah, just a real smart use of tax dollars. So good, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, we've, we've had a time with scheduling at Indian Trails for the bus drivers when you get your CDL license. So Cory is, was adding a little bit more asphalt so that we can do both testing out at US one. We have a turnaround, I believe.
Well, we're going to do that.
Eventually that we're going to add so that they can...
There's wetlands, so that kind of...
Right.
Got to work, we've got to work through St. John's Water Management, but yeah, that is the plan because they, they turn around when they're just on the, doing the tractor on there, so.
I mean, anytime there's any sort of a purchase like that or construction like that where it serves a dual purpose, it's saving money, so absolutely it's a good thing to share, I think.
All right, just one other question and it's on 707, the last one. Belters Swim and Rock the Club membership fees were collected, $7,000. What was that, that had to be from past, Patty, or?
That was for July and August, the Swim and Rock the Club was still open regular hour, seven days a week up till Labor Day.
Okay, okay, that's why I wanted to double check with that, so we shouldn't be getting any more memberships?
It's only open one day a week now from what I understand, Saturday, I believe, so the amount of...
Just regular income, that's fine, but no memberships.
Daily use, got it.
Right, it's just daily use, anybody can come in for $5 a day and come in and use the pool.
And when are you closing that, you know?
I believe it was after, it was after Labor Day and then they were going to do an assessment, I believe FTC was going to do an assessment on what the usage was to see if we wanted to keep it open as long as the Free to Zamba Pool, which is going until November. So I think they're in the, they're still doing assessment, if people come in and want to swim, they're still allowing it to see how much money that they can...
And it was as long as the cost for the lifeguard would be covered and that we would not be occurring a cost, yes?
It's been a very hot September, so hopefully things will cool down now in October, we hope.
I had one on what items, it's the budget revisions. The, where is it? The CATE forward, roll forward funds? Does that mean that there were funds in '23, '24 that weren't expended and they're being rolled over to '24, '25?
That's exactly what that means, yes.
Okay.
So that is the total amount unexpended district wide?
So I'm curious, wearing kind of both hats that I wear, because I'm hearing this across the state, is there a reason why those dollars were not expended last year on those CATE programs?
I would have to defer to Adam Blair on that, I did have a conversation with him about it.
Because they really shouldn't be that comparable over.
About why we're carrying forward so many, so he's really the expert on that.
Okay.
But I can get with him.
Yeah, fair enough.
And have him send something out.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And on the revisions, what is the, it's not a very large amount, but it says for Old Kings easement invoice for $487.50, anything like that? That is, if you remember our easement that we came, brought to the board and that's our attorney who has been working with the city, we, we were able to get the easement was signed, today they are bringing the easement to the city council, Palm Coast for that development and then after that development is approved, they should be cutting us a check. So that is for the negotiations and all the back and forth phone calls and emails that our attorney...
But that hasn't happened yet, right?
The easement has not been, is not, has not happened. It has to be during the summer is what we, if you remember, we adjusted it. So obviously they didn't get it done this summer, so the only time they can do it is next summer. So obviously, they didn't get it done this summer. So the only time they can do it is next summer.
Very good. All right, so that uh seven point zero one to seven point zero seven, any other questions on those items? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll now move on to academic services. Uh school improvement plans. Mr. Reynolds. Welcome, Mr. Reynolds.
Kevin Ferri for Moore.
Hello.
Um so what we have for you is our school-wide improvement plans. Um every year, we bring these to you for approval so that you can go to the state for public publishing. Um I just wanna talk a little bit about the process. We did have a training in June with the Bureau of School Improvement with all of our schools and their teams. And then over the last four months or so, it's been a collaborative process between teacher leaders at the school, school administrators, district staff, and then also their school advisory councils. Many different rounds of feedback, review, and revisions between all of those stakeholders um to the final products that we have before you. Um so they'll come to you at the business meeting for approval. They get published on the state's platform on November first. Um but it is a continuous process for us throughout the year. We started an instructional review process at all of our schools this year. We're gonna go to them three times throughout the year. So far, we've visited four schools. Um and Teaching and Learning, Student Services, and ESE all contribute to that process. We've visited over seventy-two classrooms so far in those four schools. And we'll get through all nine of, all ten of the first round of schools um by mid-October or so. Um the focus of this first round is really that benchmark alignment instruction. And then also, we are developing through the Academic Services Department, a school support plan. So what supports can we offer the school? And then the school tells us what do we need, what do they need, what are our priorities? And then we will keep revisiting that every time we visit. And it holds us accountable and holds the school accountable to their priorities. And then we will be coming back to you in January, February for the mid-year reflections. Um and the schools will be here to present their information for that.
Okay, that was gonna be, that was really the only question.
That was a question I have, yeah. Means it, because it's much better. They're here. Usually, they come in and present.
So they will do that?
They will. We did not do, yes, we didn't do that this time because since all of you serve on different um um SAC um as liaisons.
That's probably.
You would hear that first one there, but then.
And they'll have a full board in January, yes.
Yeah, that's fine, because they're usually it, it, yes, as long as they come in.
Yes, they will, they will be here.
It's good for the public to hear.
With where they're at.
Yep, and they have to do a mid-year reflection anyways, and then we'll have PM one and PM two data.
Okay. Yeah, because that's that's important, especially with new board members.
It's a good idea.
Yes, they will be here.
That works.
Great. All right.
Ozzy, thanks, Scott.
All right, so then, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to nine point zero two, uh student progression plan. Uh Dr. O'Brien and Mr. Yates.
Hello.
Superintendent. We just, we'll bring back before you again the student progression plan. We shared it out in detail in our last meeting. Just a couple of adjustments that were made, and I'm gonna walk you through those. So on page twelve, where we had the table, they gotta give an equivalency for help of that. We added a caveat that a teacher may only substitute for a final grade outside the equivalency with the principal's approval. So this kinda gives them a matrix to follow. However, professional, uh the teacher wants to make something different, they have to consult or work with the schoolhouse leader for that, to make that exception. That empowers them, but still gives the principal the final authority on that.
Okay.
All right. Then next, on page sixty-seven, the next four are ESE-related. On page sixty-seven, we struck the paragraph there, a student who begins ninth grade before twenty-four fifteen. So that clearly is no longer applicable to where we're at. So we're striking that. Then on page sixty-nine, we struck where it says, uh if the IAP team decides that a student does not have sufficient time, that also is not relevant any longer. But we did add, should students choose to participate in an online learning environment? So we kinda clarified that that piece or that exception for that. Then on page seventy-two, just a couple pieces there of, instead of saying by January thirtieth, it's prior to the beginning of the school year, it's the beginning of the year. And then some grammatic there, decision to consider deferring received their standard diploma. And the last one is on page seventy-eight, under continuous enrollment. Again, we clean up some of that language. It's still talked about the McKay Scholarship that no longer exists and things like that. We left in there information regarding private school or homeschool, may, if they were to re-enroll, what the process is for them to go for a waiver. And a student with disabilities participates in a virtual instruction or enrolled in a charter school. So we left that language in place. There's that exception, but took out the the old language of that, the McKay Scholarship. And those were the changes that we made since the last time we presented. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, we're all set.
Awesome.
All right.
Next.
We have.
We have a series of field trips.
Travel.
Yep. We have um, we have ten trips uh coming up this year uh from now through April of next year. Uh we have five for Matanzas, four for FPC, and one for Indian Trails. And those before you, we've verified and ensured that all the people was correct and accurate for those trips.
Great.
No questions? We have one for.
Staff travel?
Staff travel. So Mr. Morton uh from Indian Trails is going again to the Midwest Clinic uh instrumental music educational conference. It's a mouthful. Uh but it's been going on since nineteen forty-six. It's a great experience and he's done exceptionally, bringing that information and stuff back to us. And so his trip is December seventeenth to the twenty-second.
Very good.
All right, we're all set. Thank you very much, Mr. Freeman.
Thanks.
All right, so now move on to operational services, and we have Mr. Willian, Florida Safe Schools Assessors Tool.
Good afternoon, Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Moore. Uh I'm here today, which is hard to believe, for the third time um in my tenure as a school safety specialist, to present the October twenty twenty-four Florida, annual Florida School Safety Assessment Tool um that you will be taking action on um at our night meeting here in October. Um so that's just some little, a little bit of background. By October one, by midnight of actually last night, uh all schools uh in the state of Florida had to submit their annual school safety, uh security risk assessments uh to the Department of Education, Florida, through the Florida State Schools Assessment Tool, um otherwise we know as FSAT. Um and then by uh October, uh each school district must report to the department by October fifteenth that all public schools within the school district has completed their school security risk assessments. Um so something that I have not done in the past, but something that I I've worked with my colleagues around the state is creating a memo that we're gonna send to the Vice Chancellor and the Executive Director to the Department of Education. It's not required, but it's something, it's best practice, uh because we do document through the the FSAT uh tool uh that we have completed all of our school's security risk assessments. Um if you're not familiar, for the public's awareness, uh each school site has about four hundred and fifty questions uh that we sit down um to to, you know, analyze our our, the school safety of each of our campuses, including our charter schools. Uh so areas reviewed, if you wanna go to the next slide, uh just the school data, which includes assessment recording, infrastructure, the school security, prevention and threat management, campus tours, perimeters, and non-exclusive zones, building envelope, uh campus tour technology and security personnel, campus tour, public safety, and a strategic security plan, uh which is the most important one. Uh because at the end of the day, that's how we end up getting our, we're able to use our school hardening dollars that we present in February. Um so if you, if you say that you don't need something, you cannot apply for that, uh that, those dollars. The the dollars have not been allocated uh throughout the state yet, uh but we are expecting that, you know, we will receive the similar amount of funding as as last year. Uh two years ago, they reduced it and they increased it. Uh we're, we think we're gonna be in that same area, uh but it has not been released yet.
Tommy, let me ask you a question. For our classrooms, are we still taping off the?
Yeah, so so part of a House Bill fourteen seventy-three, so that was always a best practice through the MSD Commission. But part of fourteen seventy-three is that you actually have to identify the safe areas of each classroom. And you have to instruct the students within the first ten days of school where those safe areas are. Um so when uh I I will be doing my annual inspections, we will be visiting classrooms. When the Department of Education comes in to do compliance inspections, they will be visiting classrooms and ensuring that that those classrooms do have identified areas.
Okay. And are we, do we task our principals to look at that too? I can't imagine you walking into every single. I mean, I know it's a random sampling when you do it.
Right.
But I I would have to believe our principals are checking for those as well?
Yeah, so so each school does have a, uh it doesn't need that overseas safety and security. Um part of their checklist that that they go through every year is, you know, making sure that the evacuation map is on the wall. Do they have the 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 areas identified? Um all those are are pre-checked before the school, so absolutely, yes. Also, uh just for for this board's awareness and uh some some findings and recommendations, I'm not gonna get into too much details as it deals with safety and security. But obviously, some of the recommendations that we would like to continue to see, uh to enhance the safety and security of our schools is is continue to add an exterior fence and gates at identified sites, uh working with our plant services team to to work on that. Obviously, you know, last year, we we did the the large fencing project at Buddy Taylor Middle School. Uh installation of 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 the bidirectional amplification systems uh for our law enforcement partners, uh our BDA's to enhance the communication of our emergency personnel. And to continue uh to add and enhance of our access control systems that that our technology department and our and our plant service teams are are working on this year. Um so we we are gonna continue to ask for money uh from our, from our legislation partners in Tallahassee. It's, I, you know, school safety is, is, I don't, I hope they never eliminate the funding, uh but this is just a part of legislation uh that we have to submit this, um so.
Great.
All right.
Tommy, can you add the um courthouse, since we'll be taking that over with students? You'll add that to the safety plan, but that might be a place to add for, ask for more money too.
Well, he, um it does have to have an MSID attached to it. Uh so it it's not, it wouldn't be a part of the 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 assessment tool, but it's something that we as a district and our school's uh safety team would would sit down and and really look at the site.
Yeah, what it needs.
But if it does have an MSID to it?
We would, we would be added to it.
Okay, yeah. Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Willian.
Absolutely.
All right, so we'll move on to um site sub-agreement for joint use Buddy Taylor Middle School and Beltar Park. Welcome, Mr. Freeman.
All right. Good afternoon, Board Chair Furry, Superintendent Moore. Attached is the site sub-agreement for the master and our local agreement, which the board approved in July of twenty twenty-three. This agreement is between the city of Palm Coast and Flagler Schools to provide joint use and maintenance of fields at Buddy Taylor and the use of the Beltar Park. The city would like to use the PE fields at Buddy Taylor Middle School because of the growing recreational programs that they have. Wadsworth has expressed a desire to use the fields at Beltar Park for the flexibility of school recess. This sub-agreement is intended to be in addition to the so and support the master agreement that you approved uh last year. And if you remember, we brought you a site sub-agreement for Indian Trails, uh uh the school on that site back in June of this year that you approved. So this is just kind of continuing on there. This agreement is going to the city tonight for their meeting. And we'll go to you today and then, or you to vote on uh in two weeks from now. Any questions on this agreement?
Quick question. Just in the facilities, as they refer to it, they mentioned the aquatic facilities. But there's only a description regarding responsibility for facilities and fields. It doesn't mention anything about the aquatic.
It does on a section E, I believe. It says Palm Coast Aquatic Center.
Yeah, section, oh, there it is, there it is, I'm sorry.
And it talks about how the high school swim season, um and how the school board has access to the facility for swim practice and meets. That facility is used by Matanzas and the the swim season is usually goes through July through November.
So will FPC continue to utilize?
Beltar Pool.
Okay, okay, good.
Is this fencing there now or it's gonna be put up?
Okay, um we will have to add some fencing to Beltar Park. Uh where the, you know, they have uh the openings that go into the park.
Yeah.
They're just openings. So we will add fencing on there with our locks. And then there is a section at the Buddy Taylor Middle School uh fields that, a piece of fence that we need to add to secure the field off from the school. That uh we will do that. So we have not done those yet. We're waiting on whether or not the board agrees with it.
So who, for the sports teams that use that field for practice and and whatnot, um will they do use the facilities through us or for the, through the city?
They would, since that's our property, they do use the facilities for us. And since that is the city's property, we would request access during the school day for the Beltar Park. And then we would be responsible for making sure the locks of those gates are open and closed whenever we use them.
Okay, so but for others that are using that park, uh Beltel Park, they would go through the cities?
They, they would go through the city. If they wanna use our parking, which is next to, they would have to put a request. The city would put a request in to use our parking, and then we would give a key to the city to use.
Okay, that's what I was, we're about access there, because once we lock those gates, right now, it's kind of free open just to go in.
That's right.
So the city will have a key also, those locks, for when?
We we would give them access, and then they would be responsible for opening and closing. We would not give a key to a third-party user that's gonna be using that unless they go through a Facilitron request. But if they're going through, and then they would have to pay for the use of the parking lot. If uh the third party is using the field through the city, the city could request it and then it would go through a city use.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you for that clarification. All right. Any other questions on this agreement? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Freeman. All right, we'll go on to ten point zero three, review of letter of interest for corporate drive number one. Mr. Whitson, welcome.
Chairman Furia, members of the board, Mr. Moore. I always get these strange requests. They come across my desk. But anyway, basically, we received a letter of interest from a developer for the Corp One site, which is, um, you know, in the middle of town center. It's the old ITT headquarters, seven point one acres. And basically, we're looking for direction from the board today as to whether you're interested in pursuing this or not. There's a process for doing that under the state statute, and I provided a memo with the background on what that process involves. We have already um gotten the, go ahead, the thumbs up from the State Department of Education in terms of, you know, going through this educational survey. Uh you can say that it's not needed for educational purposes if you desire and move forward with the process. That part's already done. Obviously, we'd have to do the other parts of the process to proceed forward, but that all depends on you, whether or not you wanna proceed.
And when we receive the, receive the letter, we know that um prior boards have indicated that they have milk interest in selling the property. We did not want them to make an assumption, but bring this before you um so that you can give us direction on if you want us to look into this or not, so that you just know, know that information comes into it.
And the last time the board discussed it formally was June fifth, twenty eighteen.
We did have some interest uh in, with this board. I think with the library, a swap property or something along those lines, so there was at least one interaction we had, right? So um uh again, I, I, you know, personally, I don't see a reason why at this time we would be looking to to sell that property. Um.
It says retail. Do we know what that is? Is it like a, like a strip mall?
I looked them up. They look like they develop like public, big shopping centers.
Shopping center type, commercial properties, basically.
It's only seven acres, so it's not a large property.
No, but you know, you could build a multi-story.
Yes.
School, like a middle school or something.
Yeah.
You don't have, and Florida's the only place I've ever seen where you build these.
Outlaw.
massive schools. You know, up north, they would go up, go up.
Right, and it could have, it could have some administrative value in the future, you know? You know, just, just know where the, you know, as far as, you know, if we outgrew the space here, you know, that could be a place.
Could be your next site for your Flagler Technical College.
It could be, it could be that, too. It's a good central location, so.
It doesn't look like Ms. Moore wants to sell.
We did not want to speak on behalf of the board. We know that that was the previous direction. We received this letter, and not that you would even just entertain this individual, right? You would enter, if you were.
Yeah, it would be opened up.
It would be open to anybody.
And that kind of goes to the one question that I really had on this. In the, in the background, it mentions that this is one of several inquiries we've gotten.
Yes, ma'am.
How, how come his inquiry made it to the agenda? Were the others as serious or just general inquiries?
They were general inquiries and he wrote a formal letter.
I got you. He followed the process.
So we felt an obligation to, to bring it forward. One was a phone call from the city of Palm Coast saying, hey, would you guys like to sell it for utilities, you know? And the other was kind of informal, hey, I'm thinking about doing this, you know? So it wasn't really something that was brought in.
That's perfect. I just want to have it on the record that he went through the process that's in place to request.
And everyone gets the same response of what it needs to be, which is how that person ended up writing a formal letter to, to come before you. And again, you know, we, we want to be able to carry out what the board's will is, and so we thought that the answer would be no, but we did not want to say the answer was no without going through a formal process. So this will come back before them to, for you to take action that, no, we are not looking at this time to entertain any, this, this request or any such requests like it.
Yeah, so it seems like there's consensus that we do see there's, there's potential future educational value in this property, so, okay.
All right, that's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. We are kind of getting at it where our property is limited, beginning to get very limited.
Yeah, and to reacquire property, we'd be back into, into the market.
Shoveling the money out.
So, okay. So we're going to move on now to human resources, and we have Mr. Robertson for professional learning job descriptions. Welcome, sir.
Hello, welcome both of you.
Mr. Ries.
Well, in accordance with, and thank you for having us here today, in accordance with school board policy six oh three, we've drafted the following description of a coordinator of professional learning, which will be under teaching and learning. And this position is not a new position, or it is a new position, but it's not a new allocation.
It's a retitling?
It's a retitling.
Okay, that's different.
It was coordinator of data quality, but now we'd like to rename the position and use it as a way of, let me give you the job goal. The professional learning coordinator is responsible for the development, implementation, oversight of the district-wide professional learning plan. This role involves coordinating with various departments and stakeholders to ensure alignment with district goals, improving staff development, and supporting instructional quality of our schools. The coordinator will also manage professional learning communities, PLCs, oversee the ERO system, and contribute to new teacher training and retention, retention efforts. All right, and so when we start looking at the responsibilities, it's broken down into nine different areas. We've got development and oversight, school improvement, staff development, professional learning communities, the ERO system administration, clinical education training, new teacher support, emerging leaders training, and legislative and accreditation support. So we'll start looking at it. We're talking about helping with monitoring our ERO system. So basically, when teachers are getting their points for recertification, this is a position that we kind of monitor that and help them, you know, acquire those points. And we can say, hey, you need this, you need that. As we go through different things and we submit it, it would go through them to get it submitted into ERO to ensure that they're getting those points so that we can recertify them. Additionally, this is one that's going to help with our PLCs. This is a new thing that we've been putting into place where all of our schools have these PLC meetings, and so to ensure that they're getting the support that they need to make sure these PLCs are working properly to improve instruction on our campuses and help our schools reach their, reach their goals and their school improvement plans. This is a position that will help coordinate those things so that whatever supports they need to ensure that they're going in the right direction, this position's going to help ensure that. We start talking about staff development and developing our staff members. What, what do they need specifically in regards to the school improvement plans, district plans? How will we help our teachers fulfill those obligations and how will we help our administrators improve the, the staff on their campuses to meet whatever goals they've established for their schools?
This, this position used to be Louise Bossardette. We've replaced her.
But it took us months to, to kind of land this plane and felt like as a district, this was a next piece in our puzzle to try and develop a, a district-wide professional learning plan that the board approved and we submitted to state. So it's, it's a part needed for us. It's the next step for us as far as our, our progression professionally, and hopefully what it helps is retain teachers, right? That if we develop them and equip them properly, they'll stay. And that's the goal, so.
And what was the previous title of this?
It was, uh, coordinator of board data quality.
Okay, data quality. So essentially, have the, was the job goal and responsibilities updated from that or was it the same job goals and responsibilities just with a new title?
No, so the, the previous one was, was, was written through technology. Had to go, Mr. D's, I went back and looked at the original stuff. That's where Louise came into play, all that data quality she did. A lot of that work went downstairs with her in her new role, but we saw the allocation. An allocation we then changed or morphed into professional learning coordinator.
And really, it's looking at, ask people vacate roles, not just filling a role, but really identifying, is this still the role that we need? And with some shifts in, in technology, we were able to continue to fulfill some of the responsibilities that Ms. Bossardette was doing, as well in some other positions that are in technology. And then we looked at teaching and learning as a whole and said, okay, within the Department of Teaching and Learning, what do we need? And I will tell you, they were probably very frustrated with me because I sent them back several times and said, I don't know, this, I don't think this is what, what it is. And so we're at a place, and we focus a lot today on instructional, but it's not just our instructional staff. All of our staff are now in ERO and we are putting in, and they're not gaining points, but we are able to identify that they've had the appropriate training that they need in order for, for their job. So it's professional learning across our entire organization.
It allows us to track who has what, who needs what, who's missing what, and then follow up with them.
Is there an increase in costs? It'll still be the same salary, same salary line and everything else?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, question. When somebody's reading the paper, what's the first thing they read? The headline, right? First thing they read is the headline. So I know you think nobody reads our board agendas for our meetings, but I swear to you, they do. So you've done something here that's very smart. You've taken a position that's kind of outdated and you've revised it to meet the needs and the gaps that you've identified within your department, right? But what does everybody do when they read the paper and they read just the headline?
It's a new job.
Do they read the full article?
No.
No. So if you look at the agenda item, it looks like this is a new position.
Exactly.
Right? And all of a sudden, now you're going to have folks that are going to be like, adding more administrative staff. What about in our school? We need X, Y, and Z, right? So my only point in sharing that is just to kind of plant a seed in the back of your mind that the subject matter of all these agenda items are like the headline in a newspaper. A lot of people are not going to read the actual article, they're just going to make an assumption off the headline. So like in the subject, I would just recommend for consideration that for the meeting, that you revise that a little bit to say, replacing or revision of, or some way that it is identifying that this position is not brand new. It's a revision of an old position. You know, revision of the data quality or retitling or, you know, whatever. I'm not the grammar police, but you know what I'm?
So it's clear that this is not a new allocation?
Right.
We can do that.
And I know I sound like a broken record sometimes about those agenda item titles, but I, people do look at our agenda, but it doesn't mean they look at all the information in the background.
No, certainly.
So just, just for consideration.
Future reference.
That's all.
Good.
Okay, so then we'll move on to eleven point zero.
Thank you.
Great, great idea.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have a request for group for personal items.
I don't think we have any yet. Don't think we have any yet.
Oh, it's not, nothing attached, so we will, we're all good. Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, so that moves us forward to our next public comments. Do we have any signed up? I don't see anybody here, so we will bring that back and we'll go to board member requests. Any requests today?
I have an old one. I know in the past we've talked about using some of our properties, it's like storage or like an income-type passive.
Oh, like RV parking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have we looked into that anymore?
That's a cool one. It's a good way to make money.
There's big money in that, I'm telling you.
It is actually, it used to be a very, it was, it was a lower price tier in Palm Coast, but now, since it's developed, there's, all these facilities are full and they're, they're getting, it used to be like thirty dollars for the parked trailer, now it's a hundred and fifty dollars. So again, it's all a matter of the investment you have, because there are, there is investment. You have to put millings down, things like that, so you have to weigh it out whether it's worth.
And you really could create it so that it's funding, well, there's, there's ways that you could definitely do it, but we do have the property sitting there, you know, and it probably would not be difficult.
It could be an investment and they make, Kwanis, that's what they donate all the time.
Yeah, Kwanis does well with theirs.
Yeah, they do.
The, I, I think if we were to go down this road, ideally, it would be anything that we have that's already cleared, you know, so you don't want it to go into expensive clearing lots and filling them and all that, but I, I think that's definitely something to explore. If we can generate some revenue off these, the land that's just sitting there.
Or is that where you're building your truck-driving pad?
You want to add to that, Mr. Freeman? Please, come on.
And we want to, you know, we would have to look and see what property it is available because we don't want to portray to the community either that we do have this surplus that we are.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I believe about maybe two years ago, when I brought through the board the property brief, telling you about all the different property, one of the proposals on there was how we could use the hundred acres that we have out at US One, was using some of that frontage as, you know, either rent, either sell it.
RV or boat storage.
Or could be some type of, you know, commercial like they've done just down the street. So that would be a possibility. I, you know, if we're going to build something for boat storage, we would need to improve it. It would have, most likely, it would have to be asphalt by code. You'd have to get storm water management approvals, sewer, or not sewer, but storm.
Got to spend money to make money, Dave.
Yeah, there's no doubt we have to evaluate how much effort upfront and then the resources to keep it going.
It's a long-term generating.
Dr. Conville's right.
Spend that money to make money, come on now.
It's funny, I make that comment sometimes when I'm trying to get Patty to get to yes, and she's like, somebody needs to retire that comment. So that's why, I did not tell her to say that, I promise. I did not say it.
If the board would like us.
We could definitely look at what property we have.
Property, I mean, we could, we could do that.
It's, to me, it's.
Yeah, I mean, if they're, if it's a no-brainer type of thing, you know what I mean? Like, obviously, if we're going to have to invest a ton of money to clear and, and re-elevate and fill, then it, and, and all the ti, and also he's got to assess, you know, I mean, it seems like it shouldn't be a very laborious task to manage a, a storage yard, you know, but just what resources we're going to have to put into it there to see, you know, if we're going to actually benefit in, in the long run, how long it would take us to recoup our investments. I think a very short business plan, looking at it and saying, you know, hey, this is even, is this even worthwhile to spend more time on, you know?
What kind of insurance would we need to do that?
Yeah, the, all that comes in insurance.
I need fencing and you need gate, security, gate patrol.
Lighting.
There's investments, yeah.
There's a lot of, a lot of infrastructure that goes into these things.
Process.
So much for just parking them in a grass field.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thanks.
I did, I did have a request, even though I'm probably not going to be here, but I'll watch. I know we've had some questions about, and it made me start thinking, we haven't really had a presentation about gifted or blended gifted programs and what we offer and whatnot. So it might not be that idea for the board and for the community to get an update kind of on what we do for gifted education and if there are any opportunities to tweak the model or revisit the model or, and have, you know, even, you know, I'm ashamed to say, I don't even know exactly what we're doing with gifted. I know once upon a time, we had blended, we had a gifted program, so some sort of a update for the board and the public would probably be a good idea.
And I agree, that's necessary.
We have it?
Yep.
All right, so that is board member request, upcoming board discussion topics. Right now, I don't see any in the list here right now.
Yeah, I know we have Half Cent is coming up, but other than Half Cent, we should have addressed all of your, your requests that you've made. We should be completely current on all requests other than Half Cent and Half Cent. Remember, we asked for your approval to delay that until November for that presentation.
Very good. So that leads us to closing comments. Anything today?
I do have one closing comment. I love the new sign down by the courthouse that says, "We're coming."
Right.
That looks, that looks really nice.
I missed it.
It catches, it's right, you, you can't, can't miss it. It's a big banner right in front.
I was distracted.
Well, you must have been. Jeez, but yes, it's very nice and I just wanted to thank whoever did that, that's, that's a positive. Very positive, thank you.
Check it out.
Just praying for the southeast, for Tennessee. It's close to my heart. I know it's a place a lot of Floridians like to escape to.
Yeah, just same here, just to keep their thoughts and prayers on, on these communities and for our first responders that are out there and.
And the linemen.
And the linemen.
Everybody.
Everybody that's out there trying to get life back to normal for these folks and, you know, for our governor here as well, he's hard at work making sure that we get back in, in order here in our state, but others have fared even worse, so. So, yeah, for sure. They, also, I just wanted to mention one more, one thing that you, that the public may may not be aware, but we no longer, we are now a four-member board at the, at the moment. Board member Sally Hunt has officially resigned, so I just want to thank her for her service to our community, wish her best in her endeavors, but from here forward, it will just be the four of us until the new board is installed, and then we will have to wait until a governor's appointment to fill that seat, so.
Will, has anybody spoken to the governor's office?
I have reached out. I, I received acknowledgement from the appointments office and they, they did say that they, you know, they, and received, I think we all received that, that they received her, her resignation. And I have made some calls and there was some conversation about moving that forward. I did check again just before this meeting and those conversations have halted because of the storm. So I, I think right now we'll be in a pause mode for a little while and hopefully I'll have more in, in the future.
I really do hope you all get a full board.
In a reasonable timeframe, yeah.
Right, well, I, I've expressed to, to those I've spoken to that, you know, that's really our hope.
Yeah.
And we, again, there's no promises, the, the governor's schedule's very busy, but I, I've made it very clear how important it is to us to get that appointment as quickly as possible, and it would be ideal if we could have it before or shortly after our new board is installed. But again, it's all, all in the governor's timing, so.
I've received a lot of questions about the qualifications from people, and I wasn't sure if an appointment could be a non-resident. I understand it have to have the same qualifications as the applicant, so I don't know if that's true or not. Have you, have you heard anything?
I've heard mixed things about this, I don't have a definitive answer for you on this, but I, I'm, my understanding has been said that it, it does not necessarily have, that, that person, that appointee does not have to necessarily live in the district, but I'm not 100% sure about that, but that is what I've been told.
And there's a case in Broward County where the governor appointed somebody to the board that was not in the district, but the, the rub comes when it's time for reelection, that person cannot run for reelection for that seat because they are not in that district.
Unless, unless they move into the district.
Correct, but they don't, but whoever it is could be there for two more years out of district.
Right, yeah, and then ultimately, you know, that we are in a at-large election here, not a district-specific, but again, that person would have to make a residence change, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the same thing if somebody just like jumped into a district to.
Correct.
Run, you know, but, but, so, yeah, that, that's the update I have on, on that matter there.
You're not talking about out of the county, right?
No, 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 they're in the county, but they, the question is, do they have to live in the district? What I have heard is that they have to have the same qualifications as an applicant.
No.
So, but that is from town.
When they run for election.
Let me just ask Attorney Delaney if he has anything to chime in on this.
Yeah, we have an attorney.
Yes.
So, I don't know, that's why I asked.
Sure, there's a statute that specifically states that you have to be a resident of the district at the time that you take office, after the election.
Election.
That statute just don't address appointment, and I'm unaware in the quick legal research that I've done so far, that there's any case law shedding further light on that. So, I think the situation would be what Dr. Conlin described, that, and otherwise qualified who.
Can be outside of this.
School board member concerned, but in order for them to stand for election or to take their seat after a successful election, they would definitely need to be a resident of the correct district.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Very good.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
May I just add, I know I don't usually do closing comments, but for your knowledge, we will be inviting the incoming school board members to join you at the next workshop, to sit with you during the next workshop. We will be onboarding them, to give them an official Flagler Schools email on next week, well, this week, they will be cleared this week for that, and we have a series of onboarding and orientation that, that's set up for those individuals, but they will be invited to come and sit with you at the, at the next meeting, at the next workshop.
Workshop, okay.
That's good.
Okay, thank you very much, Superintendent Moore. All right, this meeting is adjourned.